To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Baikman.
Present.
B. Singer.
Present.
Boss.
Present.
E. Kiss.
Present.
Frye.
Present.
Gross.
Present.
Schruller.
Present.
Throm.
Present.
Throm.
Great. I have...in front of you should be some amendments to the minutes to the meeting on 1/11/2016. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes with amendments of the 1/11/26 meeting of the council. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. We have public comments. If you are not on the agenda, you're welcome to come and address us for five minutes, stating your first name, last name, your address, and your ward.
Marvin Turner, Ward 2, 1110 Jenkins. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor Grant. I listened to the...I don't know what company you worked for last time about the future of the city administrator's job and how you were going to advertise the $800 and some odd dollars, which is part of the budget. That's not a whole lot. I've always believed, though, that you should reward the workers if they can do the job. When we moved here in 1973, Jay Funk, I think, was the county or the city clerk. I don't remember when John Carter was hired as a city administrator, somewhere in the 80s, I think.
Eighty-five.
But anyway, the place ran just fine with Jay Funk running it. What I'd propose to you, you'd kick it around, I'm sure you will or won't, is I have a talk there with Deb about a promotion, but why not give her the title of city manager or chief clerk or whatever? You give her a raise, commence her with whatever responsibility she has there, and give the other three workers, Scott and Jenny and Cindy, more responsibility, give them a little more money. I'm sure they can all use a raise. You can still save money. The figure I heard kicked around was 75 to 80 a year. I don't know what all the fringes cost, health and whatever, but in 12 years, you're going to be right up around one mil. I think the money would be better spent promoting from within and letting them do the job that they're doing, plus whatever it takes. I'm sure they can learn how to apply for 90, 10 FAA grants, KDOT, and whatever else. I'm sure with a computer, they can figure that out. You know? Five years' experience, hey, that's great. I think they all have plenty of experience to figure out how to run this show. I'm guessing 95% of the work's coming out of those four people anyway, as far as the bookwork and everything else. I mean, a college degree's great. I don't have one. I went two and a half years, but one thing I learned in college is it doesn't make you any smarter, it makes you more educated. Ninety percent of what I learned in college, I've never used in real life. One thing that I want to thank Carla for, I was at a funeral two weeks ago when you were on the party line. My wife listened to it. At some point, I guess, the moderator, Bruce, made a comment about the late opposition to the, what I call, the 17-20 Geo project. And Carla, I think, defended those in opposition, that we do have the right to come forward, we don't agree with something. You know, it's a done deal. I mean, it's like, turn out the lights, the party's over. But I still can't get my head around nine-inch reduction in grade east of 20th, which is 22.86 centimeters. And I had a lot of people contact me, and actually none against what I said. Most of them were retired people. I had a couple that weren't retired. But one fellow that called me, he thought it was a six-to-eight-foot reduction. And I told him, no, it's nine inches. I won't repeat what he said. Thank you. Oh, another thing. There are positives to this. At least CES is getting engineering fees out of it. I mean, that's a good deal. And then I got thinking about the editorial a couple of weeks ago, or three weeks ago, about this is going to really make Marysville more beautiful. And I thought, hey, somebody from Northern Colorado, they're coming up the hill, up to 20th, they're looking at the $297,000 paint job on the water tower, and then they see this beautification project all the way along there. They might think about buying one of the houses that are empty here in Marysville. Then I thought, no, you know, they probably have their pipe in their pocket and they can't wait to get back out there and get a Colorado mountain, Rocky Mountain High, legally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
On that note, Debbie, you're more than welcome to apply for that job. Just to give you that heads up, feel free to.
All right.
Really. I mean, I never ever considered that, so feel free to let us know. Yeah. Okay. Under business and discussion items, we have Brian Frogel.
I'm just here tonight to just give you a little bit of year-end review. We've done this since we started running the rec services here at Marysville, so I think you guys all have the sheet with participation numbers, how many towns represented, how many we employed, how many ballgames, where each ballpark, and so on and so forth. And so I just was just going to ask if you guys have any questions about that report or anything.
I had two questions. When you had the volleyball youth league, did you use schools' gyms?
Yes.
And is that working out?
Yeah, and we're also talking about doing a before-Christmas type of youth basketball league, but very recreational, just like we do our baseballs. We select teams and so on and so forth. But yeah, and I think even when they get their new gym, we'll even have more access to some things.
So you feel like it's opened up a little bit more for...
Yeah, right now, we're doing a basketball clinic using the gyms.
Okay.
With...the high school boys' basketball team is helping with us, helping us as well with that. So, but yeah, we're using the junior high gym for that, and those little kids will do a halftime performance here February 2nd at ballgame.
It draws a big crowd.
Yeah, so yeah, we're using their facilities, yes.
Okay. And the other thing, this daddy-daughter dance?
Mm-hmm.
That was a new activity this year?
Yes, and we plan on doing that again this year.
Uh-huh. It looks like you had 83 participants. That's a lot.
Yeah, and it actually maxed out about, that's about how many we can have down at the Lincoln Center.
Oh, that was at Lincoln Center?
Yeah, so we're offering it again this year. It's going to be, I believe, April 1st, because then we'll have our daddy-daughter dance again. It's just a matter of, we serve them a meal, they get flowers, they get pictures with their dad, and then they just have a DJ come in and play for an hour, hour and a half. Run from about 6 to 9. It's a good deal. A lot of positive comments on that last year.
I bet.
Some of the moms said, hey, what about a...
Mother-son dance?
Absolutely. If we did that, it'd probably be more of a Blue Jean type. Where the, you know, the little girls, they loved wearing their Easter dresses.
Oh, I bet, I bet.
And their dads enjoyed it as well.
Yeah, the mothers would probably dress up and the boys would go grudgingly along.
Yeah. You never know. Never know unless you try it, I guess.
Yeah. Did you guys have any other comments for Brian?
Are the facilities...is the use free for the school facilities?
Well, yeah, we have an agreement with them, right. Yep. Yep. I've not been charged to use those facilities.
Right.
And they've been very helpful on, you know, making sure it's set up the way, where the bleachers are pulled out, you know, things like that. So, yeah, and then we just, you know, police it when we're done, pick up the trash if somebody left trash, check restrooms, things like that, which not a big deal. So, yeah, it's working out well.
Good.
I think we'll continue to have a good, you know, good relationship with the school district.
That's good. I didn't...I forgot to ask you, what's blast ball?
That's just modified form of T-ball for three- and four-year-olds.
Okay.
That's where we start with our summer ball program, is three- and four-year-olds.
Okay.
How did some of your counts compare to last year? I mean, you feel like you're...
This has actually been our...last year was actually our very, our best year. We've kept track from when we started. We've kept track from the city gave us the numbers that they had before we started and where we're at today. We're up, you know, over 800, 900 registrants before we took over. So, yeah, last year was one of our best year. And we're hoping, and it's just off our new programs and things. We had a little kids' photography class already, and we're going to be starting baseball, softball registration here mid-February through mid-March, because a lot of league meetings will be coming up and things, and getting a baseball clinic lined up and just, yeah, it's, people say, oh, you're probably busy in the wintertime. It's, you keep plenty busy and things, so...
Well, great. Well, I appreciate you coming and sharing this with us and knowing what we're doing for our city.
Yeah, we're going to be meeting with the council liaison tuning in the near future as well, just to talk about a few things, you know, come up summertime and things like that, talk to Kevin about it briefly and stuff. So we'll be meeting with some of those as well.
Okay.
Okay?
I got one, please.
Yes.
Royals trip, how are you coming with that?
We didn't get enough because we had to have a certain amount of people at a certain deadline because they had to order tickets and so on. And unfortunately, it was the busiest week of the...it was spring break, which, you know, we thought, hey, that'd be a positive because, you know, families could get away, but just, it didn't work out. We had, you know, we did have some people register, but not enough, so we actually had to cancel that trip. Yep. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next item is the planning commission recommendation regarding the public easement, and it is on page 9, 10, and 9 and 10, and 11. So I would entertain a motion to accept the easements.
Move to approve planning commission recommendation for the Mount Calvary addition.
Second.
Is there any discussion? My only question was, I assume 27 feet is the normal width of an easement for access?
No, that's just what is available to do.
But it's sufficient from our standpoint?
Yeah, it allows some turning radius.
Okay.
The idea was to, if we need an emergency vehicle in there, they got room to get out.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question.
Alley's are normally 20-foot wide, which is a little wider than that.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. The next item is an ordinance. It's on page 13 and 14. Ordinance number 1842 to vacate a portion of the alley for the Mount Calvary church that we discussed last year.
Move to approve ordinance number 1842.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Baikman.
Yes.
B. Singer.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
E. Kiss.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Schruller.
Yes.
Throm.
Yes.
It's eight zero.
All right. Thank you. I'm not aware of any notices or hearings, so we'll move on. Who are you?
Did we skip number three? We moved to approve the recommendation, planning commission recommendation, but I don't think we did the site plan. We went right from there to the ordinance.
He's right.
I move that we accept a public access easement for the site plan for Mount Calvary.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, thank you very much. All right. No notices in the hearing, so we move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion, please, Mayor.
All right.
As I went through and looked at these bills that we're paying now to WIVW and others for advertising, I noticed the dates on some of these where the bills were initiated were like in November. And my question is, why are we authorizing these now? I mean, obviously, they're out there, we've done it, and we have to pay them. We have no no vote here. We have to pay them. Shouldn't we have, shouldn't this have been something we should have been doing in the 1st of December or last of November? Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
You want to approve those prior to the expenditure? Is that what you're...
Well, wouldn't you want to have some input?
Well, I...
I mean, this is several thousand dollars worth of bills.
At the bottom, they do say that they were recommended by the majority vote of the convention and tourism committee on 10/21/15. So you're just recommending that they bring it to us at that time rather than waiting till the expenditures are gone. I think that's a valid point, and I would relay that to them.
I would just make sure we define what's...because if they bring every invoice, there needs to be some kind of threshold if you want to, if you're going to do, I mean, because they need to know where, because they can't bring every, wouldn't think they would bring every invoice.
I think if I remember right, and you were at that meeting as well, they said up to a certain amount for advertising for that, right, up in Marysville.
And you have John 10, they have, knowing that it's going to take effect in December, they had to get those scheduled. That's why that's reflecting November, because there's a time period to get all those slots scheduled in. So, yes, those are going to reflect that. So, yeah, they, as you said on 10/21, yeah, that's when it's kind of set to go, and you've got to go, and they wanted to keep it a couple thousand advertising or something like that.
I think they approved like 2,500 or something, but that information can be communicated to council. I don't think that's unreasonable.
Well, it's me, if we're supposed to approve the bills, there should be an option to say yes or to say no, you know? We can't say no to these. We've already used up this advertising time, so all we can vote is yes.
Right, but to say to go. But there's, I suppose, looking back in the future, it would be when the idea is planted or here's the beginning for you, you have to say yes or no, and go.
That's right.
Because they still have to schedule.
And I believe in that.
All of those advertisements.
Absolutely, but there was a point when they called to set up this advertising, we should have been in there somewhere where we could have said, what if the times are really tough and we decided we weren't going to do this much advertising? Here's a thousand six on this one, a thousand forty on this one. I mean, there's a bunch of bills in here, and I don't see where we have the option to say no. We don't. If the threshold is $2,500, that's what they authorize is under that.
I was, I think that was the amount. I don't want, because I can't remember exactly.
That would be nice if we knew.
And they had to know what's in their budget, I mean, in their deals, so I mean...
Right. They, I mean, when they approve it, we should just be FYI.
Yeah.
We'll get the details later, but, and if you are opposed to that, we can communicate that back to them. So I think we can make this work. Are you guys okay with...
Yeah, I guess I'm okay. I just want to remind, we've got a committee and we give them a budget, and I think at some point, you have, like, any group that we deal with, you have to trust the committee, and you're on, you participate in the committee, actively participate in the committee. So, and I guess others could if they wanted to, so I guess we give them, we kind of, we sign a board.
So the example is, is 2,500 is a lot of money.
And for them, I think it's even...
And that's why you're saying a threshold, maybe we should say.
Yeah.
So when it's a big amount, like over $1,000 like this, maybe we should just be able to communicate that to council to give you a heads up. And, you know, maybe me as liaison or anyone who represents the council that goes to that meeting should just make a mental note that you need to bring that to council.
As maybe a budget, as part of when they, when they first come to, like, they're going to do this again next year, so it'd be kind of nice to say, here's the plan for next year.
And what's your budget?
And here's kind of what I'm going to spend.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that would be, and I think the last one, there was a little bit, they would kind of...
Okay, so I will communicate that it's not every expenditure, but it's when it's something over $1,000. Are you guys okay with that, using that as a ballpark? Okay.
Mayor, I do have a comment about, see, they spent over $1,000 with WIVW, and I wondered if they, you know, had any feedback, if, you know, I can see advertising locally on something like that, but I wondered if we really...
You're just trying to say.
Yeah.
Whether or not, well, I know they, at that meeting, they said that they had people that voted on it from, what, eight different counties? Didn't they make that...
And some out of state.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were four, five, six out of state.
I saw out-of-state people cruising around, and I don't know what else they'd have been doing.
They got more votes, Brenda got more votes, even paper ballots than they expected.
So...
Well, that would be a good way to see where they came from.
But I know they made note that it was eight different counties, so...
I think their goal is to really make this going forward, estate, they want to become the Christmas, you know, Christmas stop. So they want to kind of build on that, so I think that's why we, you know, they, normally we wouldn't advertise, but they do.
And they did a pretty good job for, September, October was when, boy, for less than 90 days.
Yeah.
If you really put it together, made a success out of it, I think they deserve praise and not criticism.
This isn't criticism, excuse me, this isn't criticism, but if they have a free hand, then why are we, why are we even in it?
Well, they don't have a free hand.
This far after the fact, why are we...
They don't have a free hand. It's all, it's still eligible for review, but like Brad said, when you have these committees, you need to trust them, and I can tell you from having attended those meetings for 16, 17 years, they've turned down way more opportunities to advertise than what this ever amounts to. This is nothing. They have turned down a lot of things. They've turned, one thing, they don't do any brick-and-mortar projects, you know? They've turned down grant projects to people to fix roofs and things like that, and they don't do it because a roof doesn't put, the auto is heads-on bed, and that's their, kind of their catchphrase.
I'm just saying.
They turned down a lot of requests.
Why put this before us at all? Why are we even looking at this?
Because we have the final authority to pay the bill. It's tax money, and we're the governing body, so that's why we approve it.
But this late in the game, we can't say no.
I understand that, and I've communicated to them, that we just want a heads up when expenditures are going to be over $1,000, just kind of gives, and that I will communicate or Rick will communicate or whoever's there will communicate to council. And I will also, usually, we have the minutes from traveling tourism in our packet. We've had it the last few times, so that hopefully it would tell you.
Yeah, they've come across on our...
That would be great.
Yeah, I've seen them in the packets before, but we need to, we need to ask them to, Debbie, go ahead and send an email to ask them to make sure that we have, so that you would hear that they had eight different counties, so you would know that.
And I'm not criticizing their spending, I'm not criticizing their choices, I'm criticizing this process, you know, why it's even before us now this late in the game, because I do believe we have some very astute and very, we're very lucky to have the people on the committee that we have.
Well, I didn't take it as criticism, just information.
Some criticism.
I don't see it as criticism, so... All right. Now that we've discussed Light Up Marysville and talked about what a great success it is, did we have, we had a motion and a second? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, thank you very much. The next thing is appropriations ordinance number 3619.
Move to approve appropriations ordinance number 3619.
Is there any discussion? I would just like to add, when I turned it over and saw that we were putting $929,000 in the ordinance, it was kind of scary to me, but then I looked at what we spent, that first draw, the first meeting in 2014, and it was $795,000. And you have to add to the fact that in this was the first half-payment to the GI project, which was $282,000. Plus, we, in this specific ordinance, we have $325,000 of transfers, so that's why it's such a huge number. I don't know if you guys looked at it and kind of said, that's a lot of money, but, and then we had 40,000 of annual payments in there, so that's why the number is so big. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
I have a couple of questions on those two, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The library treasury, tax distribution, 2015 overage, plus 2016 first, what appropriation? $129,642. What is this overage?
That is, when we get, if we get receipts, it doesn't happen every year, but if we get receipts in excess of what's budgeted, we cannot give that to them, because it's a budgeted fund, we cannot distribute. So they got 100% of their tax distribution last year. However, because of, and a lot of the overage is basically coming from delinquent taxes that have been paid. That's where most of it, some of it was from the CMV fee, the commercial motor vehicle fee, which was a result of legislation that was produced by the legislature a year or two ago when they split up the 1620 vehicles and nobody knew what was going to go on. So between those two revenue sources, that generated most of that $5,000 and some odd dollars that we carried over for the library, so we have to give it to them, it's theirs. Debbie and I discussed it, I think what we'll do is we'll talk with the librarian and suggest somehow that their budget for next year maybe needs a little less. I mean, that's $5,000 over and above what they expected, what was budgeted for even this year. Because, see, they'll still get, well, and...
Not too, 100% of what they...
Well, yeah, we, and there may be another carryover next year, and the only way I see to do that is to tweak, maybe their mill levy down a little bit so it don't need quite as much or, well, there's a way to, there's a way to work that budget without affecting the mill levy, and I can discuss that with Janice, I mean, there's a way to tie that in there so that they don't need to, it can, it might take a year or so to get it back down to where we don't have all that, but that's not the first time, maybe a year or two ago, they hit like 300 or something.
This is the first time I noticed it.
But last year, there was a lot of delinquent taxes that got paid.
Usually, I bring this to you and Debbie, I don't, before we get to the council meeting. I didn't get to do that today. I have another question, too, about the Roy Hanny Bill, 20275, and the Nelson Power and Light, 907. Both of these are on the Kestner, Kestner House or Kestner Museum, and it says foundation to reimburse on both of those. When do we get reimbursement from the foundation?
It usually comes pretty good. Cindy sends it out. I think she's probably already sent a bill.
I got it today.
She's already got it.
Money came in today? Okay.
And it's coming through the city for purposes, if we, because the foundation cannot get tax credits. If there's any tax credits that can be gained from that, it goes through us. I'm not sure those are going to get it, because I don't believe they were in the tax credit application. They have to be amended.
It may have to be what, amended?
Yeah, it may have to be, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Then my other question was the Kansas State Treasurer, interest for the Water Tower refund bond of 2015, $19,987.50.
It's first interest payment.
Is that what that is?
Yes.
How many more of those we have?
Twice a year.
Twice a year?
That's what we just refinanced.
Oh, okay.
February, I think the due dates are February and August, so it shows up in January and July.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, roll call, Debbie.
Baikman.
Yes.
B. Singer.
Yes.
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
EKIS?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
All right, City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I have here is a Clink project RFP. And what I did with this, it's really a combination of a request for qualifications and a request for proposals. And I just wanted you to be, see if you're comfortable with this, if there's something you think should be in there. But what I tried to do, will spell out what things I think the project is going to entail, gives the engineers who may respond a little bit better idea what the project is going to entail, because a lot of times if Cindy's out, they don't have any idea what you're doing until they come in this way. Give them a good idea. I'll send out also those pictures, the actual application, so that anybody that sends a response, and I'm going to receive those electronically, not paper copies, they're pretty much aware, they'd be able to come in and sit down, maybe give it some thought before they come, maybe have ideas if we get to an interview process. So is there anything that you want pointed out, something you think's missing? I just want to make-
I was just curious who you're sending this to.
Right now, I don't know yet, but I'll probably send to five or seven firms. I usually keep, oh, I think I've got some on a spreadsheet, and then I usually go through a file to see if anybody's, I try to keep it current, the people that, engineering firms that have come and left a card, call, something like that, ones that show an interest in Marysville, not just picking up a book and say, "Here's what Goodman sounds like." I do have a list of a lot of firms, but-
And then it makes reference to it, it says on page 37, it says the selection committee? Who is this?
Probably that consistent, probably the street committee, myself. You can be included in that because you've probably never ranked rated. I don't know if you, have you done any of those before?
No.
You'll get a chance.
Yeah, I just-
We'll put you on.
So the street committee plus me?
Yeah, and myself, and probably Debbie, that'd be five or six.
And the other thing-
If we get enough responses.
Yeah, if we have a few to look at. And then you have a date of February 15th, you believe that's long enough?
Well, if you guys want it longer, I mean, that's, I just, because I'm doing this electronically, those firms, because the responses they put out are boilerplate. So all they have to do is, I think so, it's tight, but, I mean, I could go no two weeks and make it to, I could give it another week or so.
Seemed a little tight, two weeks.
Well, I can make it, you know, I could do, I could do the 20, the week of the 22nd, which is after the council meeting, which means we could probably wrap up a rank and a rating, we'd interview, and by the 14th of March-
Well, you could make it to the 19th, and then we could discuss it for the 18th, and we could look at it on the 19th.
They probably won't be able to get all that soon.
Okay. So go ahead and make it to 20. Do you think we should send it out a little bit?
I could do it till the 19th, and by that next week, I'll have everything out and ready to look at. I can go February 19th, that's not a problem.
You guys think that makes sense?
Gives them four more days. And then a week of the 22nd, I can have the, I can have them all fit together and ranking sheets ready by the end of next week.
Did you guys have any other comments? Okay? All right.
All right, thank you. Second one, item here, pages 43 to 44, is ambulance contract presented by Bruce's. Again, two pages, and I think I stated here, that's actually less than what a budgeted, budgeted amount is 142,837, so, well, we're about seven or eight hundred, six, six or $700 under the budget. So recommend it. The contract renewal, Marysville ambulance service be approved, authorized, and Mary to sign agreement.
Move to approve. Contract, that's it.
I did notice that last year, the contract amount was 136,035, so they didn't-
And they have a, in paragraph C-
A potential multiplier in case-
Yeah, they have a multiplier. Basically, it's at or roughly below 5% roughly, is what it's been typically.
And besides this amount, they haven't ever increased it during the calendar year because of unforeseen expenses.
Nope, no, they haven't. They've got that multiplier there, but-
Yeah, they have it in there, but I don't think they've ever-
Right, well, that's the same thing we had in the mowing contract too for the, but yeah, it's been around a 5% a year increase.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kedoh?
And just to note, last week, Don Hiskey and Mike Spatafor, we're here from KDOT, I met with the mayor and I for a site review. The high school principal was also there, and Mr. Mullins joined in on the conversation for a little bit, he needed to answer some questions. They advised us there were 50 applications requesting $31 million, there's only $14 million available, and I think they kind of indicated that's probably what's going to be over the next, what, five years, felt uncomfortable with that. I presented a scenario of, you know, if this is awarded, maybe combining it with the Clink overlay if we get one of those, if both happen to be approved, and that was acceptable to them. I got the feeling talking with them that if we apply for the Clink on 77, there's a better than even chance that they're probably going to, did you pick up that?
It was like highly likely, I was shocked.
Yeah, it was. I'm trying to be conservative here, but yeah, it was like-
I mean, she was just like, "Oh yeah, you'll get that."
You'll get it.
So go plan your engineering services for a combined project, and I was looking at, I was shocked that it was like-
Yeah, it was, she said there's only been one year where they haven't awarded it to everybody.
Yeah.
And that was three years ago, 2011, something like that.
Which kind of shocked me, because, you know, on this one, they had applicants twice as much as the money available, but I guess the Clink project, because they max out at $300,000, you know, people only do it when they can afford to do it.
Well, but see, it's also, but all it is, is just million overlay. See, these TAs are all kinds of, it's the stuff that you can't do with the Clink, so I think that's why they're so competitive.
Anyway, it was very encouraging that we would get the Clink funding for the next step. So when we decide the funding for that Clink project on 36, we'll have to take the next consideration that it's highly likely, so.
Do 77, yeah, and I think the April, May, I think is when they send the notices out, something like that. And you'd know by September, but they'd advise not to wait, you know, that we needed at least be in the design process on US 36 project, so, but we won't, we wouldn't want to bid by September anyway. So, and if that happens, and they are combined, then you're can, the fiscal year 18 begins July 1 of 2017, so, you know, you could be, there could be some construction either this summer of 2017 or the spring of 2018, because that would be the 2018 fiscal year. So, yeah, if you combine, you'll have to do it in the fiscal year 18.
That was all good.
Again, repeating is that if we get that, then I think they really want them to say, if this TA comes here, put it in the Clink project.
Well, they were, sounded very likely that the TA was going to come through.
Yeah, they sounded pretty confident that this is such a small, it's one of those little thing wards, small wards, yeah, because they questioned why the costs were so small. And that was-
Now, that was on their streets.
Oh, that was on, that was on the, you're right, I'm sorry, that was on the SRTS, the one at the school districts, but not on ours.
Yeah, not on ours, but-
I think as far as ours is concerned, it's pretty small potatoes.
It still seemed very likely, so. But we should hear from that.
March, I think.
And then we'll do the application for the next Clink in April.
April or May, I'm not sure. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Moving along to the city clerk. Debbie presented a list of trainings that, for committees that she is on, on page 45. And I guess, when I looked at this and I added all these days up, I guess I was kind of concerned about the number of days that, that you're away from the office, based on when I add these all up. I came to that you'd be out of the office for 20 days, which is a whole, four whole weeks of, you know, training, conferences and meetings. And I guess, I looked at it when I asked Todd how much training our police officers had, he said 40 hours a year.
Men.
Excuse me?
It's men, 40.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, in the same vein, I don't think we can afford to have our police officers to go to four weeks of training. And I guess, when I looked at this, I don't think, we didn't request that you, we didn't ask you to become these officers, right, of these positions?
No, I was approached by other, other members of the association.
So I guess, I look at it as, we need to have a policy for, and maybe it's just the city clerk's position on how much time off, maybe have the finance and admin committee meet and make a recommendation on how many paid days off to go to conferences slash meetings slash trainings, and then be willing asking the city clerk to use vacation time for any hours above that policy amount. I just think we're setting ourselves up that we should have some policy in place. So are you guys okay with having the finance and admin, and contact other cities and see what they do? I mean, this is all kind of a gray area to me, but it just seems like a lot of days if all of our 37 employees wanted a month off for training, we'd be in trouble. So, are you guys okay with bringing that to the next meeting? Is that okay?
Yes.
And our new city attorney may be able to give us some guidance on that too.
Yeah, I guess, I, yeah, that or calling other cities and asking them, they could, you could definitely ask him what the other cities do that he, they're in charge of, but maybe other cities our size, you know, do some calling or whatever, so. So we're just, as far as, I don't think, we don't want you to participate in this, but I just don't know if we should have the precedent of paying, having you out of the office and paying for you for that many days. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, so we will bring that back at the next meeting, something to, recommendation for the council. And then you were going to bring up, oh, the biking.
Mm-hmm. The news, Marysville has been chosen as a stopping point, a host city for biking across Kansas this year, and they anticipate 900 participants from across the nation, and they'll be staying overnight in Marysville on Wednesday, June 8. So I've been in contact with Brenda at the chamber office, and I know that there'll be several organizations that'll be working to make it a success.
Todd, did you do this? Have you done this?
Yes, yep.
And were there really 900 participants?
That's, yeah, 900 participants, plus you'll get probably 150 to 200 support staff, crew, and, I mean, they're all beyond bikes, but they'll get, you'll get hundreds of extra cars too, you'd be surprised, it's quite the deal. I mean, it really overwhelms towns when you're out in western Kansas, and it's a town with like 400 people in it, because you're tripling the size of the town overnight, but-
And they stay in the schools and-
Yep, a lot of them will sleep on the gym floors, and some people tent camp, some people prefer to do that. And some will stay in hotels, there's a lot of people who just prefer a comfy bed. And if I do it, then I'll, I'll stay at home.
Yeah.
I'm not going to sleep on the gym floor. But, no, I mean, and it's one of those, they'll start coming in early afternoon, after lunch the early ones will, and then they'll be hanging around town and shopping and moving around, spending money, and most of them will be gone before, much, after sunrise in the morning the next day, so.
I did send the information out on the listserv, and some of the other clerks have responded, and I guess this happened in 97. We were a stopping point in 1997, so, they had a barbecue, I don't know if that was at the park or the school or where, but-
And, you know, some towns really bring out the welcome wagon, and some towns, it's kind of a non-issue, but, I mean, I think the towns that really bring out the welcome wagon brings a really good impression, because you've got all these people, and then they've been on a bicycle all day, they're really ready to go have fun and enjoy themselves, and it's a good promotional tool.
Well, we're just going to have finished the barbecue that weekend before, and it seems like if we could just carry it on and have a-
Barbecue all week.
Barbecue for the week? It could be a huge success, so that's really exciting. I'll be anxious to hear, and I assume Ali Argo has this for Main Street kind of thing too?
She might, she probably will by Thursday, it's going to be a meeting Thursday, from what I understand.
Okay.
These people, right, they also be like gravel dash riders, so-
There's a, it's a kind of cross-section. You'll get a lot of people that are strictly road riders, and you'll get the kind of racer types too. I mean, this, you'll get everybody from eight to, I think there was a 91 or 92-year-old two years ago that I met, and he was by far not the slowest rider in the group. It's a really wide mix of people, and some of them, like I said, are really serious, and they'll come in, they'll take a shower, and they'll go to bed. Then there's the ones who want to go in, they'll go find Joe's or the wagon wheel or wherever they can get a drink. So it's a real mix of people. And a lot of them are from Kansas City, but there's also, through the Kansas City area, but there's also a lot of people from out of state and international. I think I met probably 15 or 20 international riders.
And maybe Lori Parks want to do that thing, you know, she has, for the gravel dash, remember she had that out bar?
That, and that would be really not too far from the school, and on the trail, because people will kind of come in and go that way, that would be good.
It's just amazing how many people we get.
And the pool, and the pool too, because the pools are always really hot in the towns where we do it.
Well, we're prepared for that.
You want to get cooled off.
Although we might have to get more guards, so, we might need to let Maria know about that, so that's, that's all good news. And we just realized, they're traveling down 36, we looked at the map on, the route on the map, and they do have a little route around Hanover that's a gravel route, and then they have another route that takes them in to 77 through Nebraska and then back down to 36. So they have a couple out of routes.
They do that so people can get a century ride. A lot of people want to, some of them try to make every day a century ride, it's over 100 miles, and so they do that, little add-ons, and you'll see people, don't be surprised when they're here, you'll see people riding back out of town, going, you know, wonder why, but that's what they'll do, is they'll ride here and back to Hanover and back, or something like that, to get their miles built up.
And also, that GI project should be going on then? So when they're traveling down 36, it could be chaos on 17th and 20th, but we won't tell them that.
They'll like the stretch better, well, other than the stretch across the town with no shoulder, but like going east, it won't be bad, because you've got a big shoulder. And these are people who use, who've ridden a lot of highways, I mean, you shouldn't get people being idiots out there.
Traffic will be slow through 17th and 20th, so they should appreciate that. All right. We'll move on to standing committees, the first thing is Street. I would just like to say that I thought they did an excellent job on the snow removal when we had those five inches of snow, because it seems like they cleared the primary streets quickly, they got those piles removed the very next night, I mean, I just thought it went really smooth. But, did anybody else have anything to say besides we go to, before we go to 46, paint 46?
I just wondered, Mayor, if North 11th, north of the grade school could be bladed? I know there's an issue with a couple blocks up, cars, but there's so much school traffic there that they just-
On your map?
Yeah, if you start doing that, and it's not one of the main routes-
But it is one of the two schools it is.
Then everybody else, then everybody else, and the other routes that aren't, that are on a very, on the same route, that's a secondary route, then they would be justified in wanting theirs done. You start to press it, I don't think you want to go there.
Well, I think showing the school though, that 11th Road and Street is a primary school route.
It goes up, over, and back down.
I know, but to go north-
It could be a lot of traffic in the morning.
11th comes down though.
Yeah.
Here, I'm sorry.
That goes south.
I don't think you want to go there, because you're going to open up a can of worms. I wouldn't recommend it. Yeah, you've got a good point, I want to argue the point with you, but I don't just want, because then other folks will say, "Well, North 11th, they got theirs and they're not on a route, why can't we get ours?" You know, it's all right.
Well, you could make it like, just going from 11th, from, well, it's Austin to North Street.
These are laid out. Look on the bottom, emergency and primary snow routes defined by Marysville City Code Chapter 14, they're done by ordinance.
Yeah, we don't change.
Secondary not defined by ordinance.
I don't, you know, and I don't-
And the yellow is not, somebody's highlighted this map, so the yellow is not.
Ignore the yellow.
Ignore the yellow.
So, you know, I guess this has 10th Street as being one of the primary routes, is that correct?
Right.
But, I mean, I've got no statistical evidence, but does 10th Street get that much more traffic north of Calhoun than 11th Street does?
No.
Or north of, or north of Austin? I mean-
Been about the same.
Because 11th, you know, I mean, I look farther down, but 11th gets a ton of traffic in the mornings, I mean, lots of kids, lots of people going back and forth.
I kind of agree with you, you have 10th showing as a primary route all the way to Jenkins Street, where if you decide to, instead of switch that over and make it 11th up to North Street, I mean, like, I don't know why Hillcrest is a primary route.
It's not.
Well, it's green.
It is on this.
I'm sorry, oh, it's not, I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
The street above Hillcrest, that's Jenkins.
It's Jenkins.
But that two-block stretch there, I'd almost say we need to move that over, and like Todd said, once you hit 10th and Austin, move it over to 11th and make that the primary up to North Street, just for the school kids. Now, you're saying that you know there's a lot of cars parked on 11th Street. If you make it a primary street though, you can still just go down the center and at least clear the center, can't you, Rick?
I don't think you can go down the center of the street with cars parked on both sides.
You can't get a-
I don't, yeah, you can get it down through there, but I think you're going to pile-
Well, no, people park on both sides, you got a chance of having problems with collisions. I would not recommend doing it, I'd leave it the way it is. You start going down those streets, because those people don't park anywhere but on the street that I'm on. And that, there's not very much room. Our V, our plow is like 10, 11 foot wide, you don't have much room between the cars or not-
Well, if you don't hit a car, you're going to pile snow right up against the door. Well, if you don't hit a car, you're going to pile snow right up against the door.
And then you're going to have, guess what? You're going to have all kinds of insurance claims. You threw a rock, you broke my windshield, there's snow inside my car, you pay for that. Folks, I wouldn't go there. I would leave this the way it is. Cave the door in or something.
Why is Frank Marshall driving a primary route? That's the first question.
Yeah, I don't know. This is an old map. This is an old map.
The second one is, I had two people on that street complaining that they didn't get plowed, and it's a primary route.
Well...
We're confused.
I don't even know that all of our primaries got done. Again, I think this is an old map.
That's...
But the primary, go to that question, though. A primary is if they can get it done. Obviously, an emergency route, you have to get it done.
Emergency's first. If we had, okay, these emergency routes are going to be any snow, okay? The primary is if we get the big snows, then you go do those. And then all the others get it afterwards if there's time. But primaries don't always get plowed.
Okay. There's no guarantee.
If there's an eight or nine-inch snow, we're going to do the primaries. Four to five inches, and, you know, if we had four to five inches, you had another three or four coming the next day, probably going to get out there and wait and go those, but a four to five, and there's no future snow and weather, you know...
I had a dozen people asking what the inch cutoff was. It's like, "What's the inch cutoff back then? Is there an ordinance carved out?"
I think there used to be about four to five inches, about, I think it was six.
Was it six?
It may be six. It might be six. For some reason, I think four, but it may be six.
Everything gets cleaned if it's a certain height of snow?
We get over six inches, they'll do all the streets.
Why?
But these primaries aren't going to get it in a normal snow.
Why have we got an emergency route from North Street up to North Park?
Because that's the way council in the past, some council in the past, the pasty ordinance designated it that way.
We live on that street.
Because these are done by, these were designated by ordinance. You've got, for one, that's a collector's street. You've got a lot of traffic to move down. That's a straight shot from clear up there and by the cemetery all the way down to the highway. It's a straight shot, no stops. I think that's probably why...
There were more doctors living out there at the time as well.
May have been. May have been, yeah. At the time.
We've got to take doctors to hospital or truck. Some streets aren't allowed.
Well, it's good to have this, so when people call you...
Yes.
I had people call me at 466 that morning, so at least I have the information now. I'll have to still wake up and go look at it.
And I was going to say it's a roundtable, but I guess it kind of falls under street, which is sidewalks. Would you say that falls under the jurisdiction of street? What ordinance do we have in place as far as businesses and/or homeowners having some sort of...
I think they're supposed to do it within 24 hours.
And that's the same rule for homeowners and businesses?
Yeah, pretty much.
I'll send a letter.
I was going to say, do you have a lot of people complain about it? I mean, I assume it's a complaint-driven process to...
It's complaint-driven.
Because there's a lot of them that are still, I mean, now they're melting off, frankly, but especially when it comes to the, near the schools. You know, some of them I think are listed properties, they aren't necessarily, you know, they're for sale, so nobody's living in them, so it's...
It's the same thing with parked cars, though. You know, those parked cars are supposed to be moved every 24 hours, and there's cars that still got snow, that still got stuff plowed around them that ain't been touched.
Right. But the sidewalk thing's a particular, you know, thing with kids, as far as it's a safety thing as much as anything. Because if the sidewalks are bad and they'll walk down the street, then that's a problem.
So you send them a letter, and what does the letter say?
It says you got to clear it.
It just says you got to clear it.
But by the time they get the letter, 24 hours has passed.
I understand that.
So is there any way to speed that process?
That there's no repercussions if they don't do it?
Maybe it's something we need to let the paper put a deal in there that says, you know, you're supposed to have your snow removed in 24 hours after a snow.
They know worse than the grass clippings being blowed out on the street.
Well, it is actually worse because it's a safety issue.
It is, yeah. Because kids walking to school can't walk down the sidewalks at schools.
Postal, postal employees, it's going to be like...
I think the letter should be more forceful than, "This is what the rules are." I think the letter should say, "Some kind of penalty, you have 24 hours."
I think a lot of cities have struggled with this.
There is a penalty for it.
There is a penalty for it?
Yeah, there's penalty clauses.
Do it, do it.
It's not obstruction in your sidewalk. Have we ever enforced it?
Yes.
No.
You want me to go and enforce it? That's what we will, but you're going to take a lot of heat for it.
Well, I mean, I think there should be some sort of track, a warning track to that, but, I mean, you know, people think there's no repercussion for flouting the law, then what's the point of the law?
I agree. I mean, even the postal service wants to take your mail if they feel that they don't want to walk through your town. They do it all, too.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should execute...
But the thing is on the move of the vehicles, it's like it snowed that night, my big trucks out in front of my house, I moved it the next day, but they never came back, so I play right back as those in there. Really, once they plowed once, either they're plowed again or they're lost.
Flouting the law?
Yes.
Conjugate that for me.
Flouted.
Well, I think we do need to execute the law on the sidewalks from a safety standpoint. I think, you know, if you send them a letter, I guess if you...
Can we keep track of who we send the letter to, and then if there's a second instance?
Right.
Then, I mean, I understand a lot of people, especially if they're elderly or, you know, they're maybe ill or maybe there's special circumstances, and I'm, you know, I get that. But if they never do it, or if it's somewhere where it's a rental, it's still somebody's responsibility.
It is their responsibility, yeah.
Well, I don't want to put an ad on Candy White first and see if that helps out.
Well, I'll be talking at Candy White tomorrow. Do it. I will talk about that at Candy White, the importance of doing it and the safety issue.
And do we know what the exact time is? I had heard eight hours after the snow ends.
24 hours.
It's 24 hours after it ends.
That may be next Tuesday.
Mayor, you might remind them about cars being tagged.
Yeah, they're off again, next Tuesday.
We're going to start that program soon. Cars being tagged in yards or just vehicles.
Semi-abandoned vehicles anywhere, yeah.
If they're on the right-of-way, we don't have an ordinance to back it up.
What do you mean? They're sitting on the street?
On the street, yes. But the ones that are parked in the right-of-way, you don't have anything to back it up.
Like in their backyard or something like that.
Well, like that RV that's up there on, what, North 10th or whatever it is.
North 10th. Can't touch it.
Can't touch it.
Well, we can write an ordinance, we can decide to do something about it.
There's a telephone pole on Jenkins.
The thing is, about your off-street parking area, you have a right-of-way, but you don't own it. The people own that property, that's why it's written the way it is. They own it, you have a right-of-way to use it, but you don't own that property.
Well, don't we have something that says you can't just park vehicles just all up over your yard? I mean, don't they have to be desk...
In offer, as long as it's tagged and insured, they can have a plan.
Oh, I think we're talking about expired, I think we're talking about cars with expired tags, yeah.
Some of them are junk and they ain't got no tags or nothing.
We call them derelict vehicles.
The one I'm thinking of is expired tags and...
24 hours.
If their tags are expired, they're derelict.
Okay, this is what the code book says. "It shall be unlawful for the owner and/or occupant of any lots abutting upon any sidewalks to fail to cause to be removed from such sidewalks, all snow and ice, within 12 hours after the time that the snowfall or ice storm ceases. If the snowfalls or ice accumulates upon the sidewalk in the nighttime, removal of the same shall be made within 12 hours after sunrise on the following day. It is unlawful for any person to place snow removed from private property upon any public street, side alley, or sidewalk unless authorized by the Public Works Director." Oh, and then here's the penalty. It says that any person violating these provisions shall upon conviction be fined $25.
Cost one prosecutor.
Yeah, no kidding.
Oh, and then we can assess it if they don't pay it?
We can go and remove it and assess it to the taxes.
So if they don't pay it, then we can assess the cost for us to remove, right?
By the time you get through that process, it's all melted.
Say it's melted by then.
So basically, after the snow, the next day, you need to, during the daytime hours, you need to shovel your sidewalk. Okay.
It's supposed to.
All right. We're going to talk about this truck on page 46?
Sure. Why not? Now, Gary's kind of wrapped up. This is the only truck that doesn't require a CDL to drive.
And I don't think, believe it or not, you'll find another single-axle truck at a state auction because the state has all went to twin screens.
Not going to find them at state auction. I gave him some, I had some contact information from various fleet dealers, and he's looking at that. He doesn't have anything. It may be, well, basically, question, do you want to, it's not worth fixing.
Not with all this stuff, probably.
No. But if it's acceptable with the council, may we pursue trying to find another single-axle replacement?
We had in the budget...
About $15,000.
It said $30,000 budget for a used truck or tractor.
Okay, which would probably, I don't think you're...
Will it cover it?
If you get it used when it should.
Yeah.
But it's not going to be real new. Probably something maybe within less than 10 years old, maybe. We just want to know if we can pursue this because we're looking around, yeah, state surplus, I don't think you'll find anything.
Okay, well, I'm okay because it's the budget for $30,000, so just don't bring me a $100,000 truck.
I'm not going to bring a $100,000 truck.
And then, the other thing is that, how many employees don't have CDL? And why?
Have we got any street department? I think there might be one or two that don't have a CDL yet because general laborers don't have to have a CDL. And I think we got one, I think we have at least one street department employee that's a general laborer.
Do the street all have CDLs? Okay.
Except for the new kid, you're right.
No. I said there's...
Okay.
I think we ought to search for one, bring it up next meeting.
Excuse me?
I think we ought to search for another dump truck and bring it up next meeting.
Okay.
We'll try to find one by then.
See what you can find. The only other thing, last week we talked about street signs, I don't know, and how Rick said that it was $26,000 to replace all the signs. You know, we have talked several times about how we said people have to have these street numbers on their houses. How can we make people have street numbers on their houses when we don't have good street signs? I think, you know, we can't force those people to put street numbers on any more than, before we put the street signs up. So I think we need to make that a decision, to go ahead and replace those street signs, even if it's $26,000, and get our part done. And I'm sure we have money in the...
We could probably pull some off Street and Highway.
In the sales tax fund.
I'd take it off Street and Highway.
Street and Highway, I thought we were going to use that for the overage on the GI project.
Yeah, it might be a little bit. We can come out of sales tax, I mean, there's public works money in there.
Yeah.
We could come out.
We have $285,000 in public works money, and for $26,000, I think we should do our part to make the signs readable. I mean, how do you guys feel about that?
I agree. As I mentioned when I was driving around, trying to look at the Christmas lights, and I tried to memorize where I was supposed, what street I was supposed to turn because I was by myself, and I couldn't read the street signs.
So I think it's a safety issue. You disagree, Kevin?
I disagree. We just stay on a continuous project, make sure we spend the allotted money each year for it, and we should be done in two or three years.
No, it'll take us four years. We have $6,000 budget per year.
Going to take us four years. Go with the worst ones and keep going from there.
Well, but we haven't been doing that, going with the worst ones.
I kind of agree with Kevin. Let's do one project at a time.
Yeah, he's been trying to get the worst ones.
Till it's done.
But do we have all the worst ones done? No.
My street corner had the new green signs, and then two years ago, here they come along with new green street signs, and I went, "What are you doing?" And they said, "Well, the ordinance has changed. Yours has four-inch letters and these are five-inch letters."
MUTCD.
But they were brand, my sign was brand new.
We're supposed to comply with MUTCD, which changes every few years.
Well, I'm sure...
Because at the, at the meeting the mayor and I were at, KDOT, they showed two different kinds of signs in accordance with MUTCD, depending on, because a crosswalk sign is different than a school crossing sign.
And a pedestrian crossing, this is a school crossing. So the ones that are going to, just to...
So I don't think all of ours comply. They may not.
And the two crossings we're going to put up on Highway 77, assuming we get that TA money, one's going to be a pedestrian crossing and one's going to be a student crossing.
That's correct.
They're having different signs. It's kind of weird, but anyway, what, I mean, you guys, what do you want to do about these street signs?
I think we'll spend the budget every year, four years.
Take it four years to do it?
Because don't we order those in lots? Like, don't you go 14th Street, 15th Street, 16th Street?
I think he's trying to do...
And if you're hopping around to do the very worst ones, I don't know if you can, you can't, I don't think you can do that, can you? I mean, or it costs more because you're cherry picking when you order those, call those in, and they have to set them up for print.
Yeah.
Well, okay, but if...
If it's one you haven't printed before, then there's a setup charge on those. Otherwise, I don't think they charge a setup charge if you're printing before.
But I don't think we need to put pressure on these people to put their house numbers on if we're not going to put new street signs on. So our budget right now is $6,000.
And it would cost...
26 to replace all the ones that they said were bad.
But we could find the money.
We could find the money.
I move that we go ahead and replace all the signs that need to be done now with the $26,000.
Using six of the budget that we have and the remaining 20 out of sales tax?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Discussion.
Okay.
Is there any advantage price-wise for us to do it all at once as opposed to out of four years?
You might get a little bit of a price break on quantities. There's usually a price break on quantities. I think that even has its upper limits.
But at that, the money that we're spending this year to do them all is money we won't have to spend for the next three years because they'll be done.
Other than you're pulling it out of sales tax?
They'll be done in accordance with how much time they have to do them. Keep in mind, that's not the only job, unless you want that to be the only job that the street department does during the winter and they do nothing else but replace street signs, keep in mind, they do it as time allows. When spring starts, March, April gets here, probably be getting into getting ready for When spring starts, March, April gets here, probably be getting into getting ready for sealing and patching those, and then, so the summer is going to be taken up with patching, sealing, maybe overlays, chip seal, whatever. It's winter and late fall generally when those signs get replaced, and there's one or two guys that do that.
And we're replacing the poles as well, we're not just going up on top and putting...
Going square posts, yes.
Okay, and, so what you're saying is it could take four years anyway for all these to be put up, they could be, we could warehouse the signs because we bought them in one year, and our guys haven't had the time to put them up, and it could take four years to get them put up anyway?
And you hope that MUTCD doesn't change, and they go to a different size or type, but I don't see that happening.
Does the 26 include the poles too to put them up with, Rick?
I think that cost I gave you had, I think it had the poles.
Or is that just the signs?
I'd go back and look, didn't know what I was talking about this night, I couldn't have pulled back.
You know, you may have another 20,000 in that.
Because you need those posts.
It's a reason why we haven't spent the budget in prior years, because they don't have time to do it, or we just haven't done it?
A lot of it's time related. And it's unfortunate that we aren't maxing out to the budget on those, I'd hoped it'd go a little center of gravity.
But it takes, they just use two guys to put them up, and they have to use the big loader when they put them up, too.
Yes, yes. You know, generally if you use the loader, to get the high man to push it down.
I watched him do it.
Yep.
Okay, it's about to do all of them? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I just thought I'd bring it up and, alrighty. The next item is water and wastewater? Do you want to give an update on the waters?
Yeah, I think you guys are all aware of what happened down at the water plant with the little water leak. Still, Kent was per, we lost two computers, the SCADA computers back online. Matter of fact, it was, what is this Monday? It was online by Friday, they're back up, microcon came up. The insurance agent or adjuster was up. Basically, replacement cost value that he said for everything was $3,721.87. This didn't include the computers, this was only carpet, walls, ceiling tiles, not peripheral damage. $3,721.87 replacement cost value, less depreciation of $400, actual cash value 3,321, a deductible $2,500, a net claim of 8,2120, net claim of depreciation recovered 12,2187. I'll call him, I ain't happy about that, but that's, but I'm hoping, I think Kansas Gas is communicating with the insurance company, and I'm thinking that they might be good for some of this, I don't know for sure.
What exactly caused the bleep? Was it cool air coming in, or?
The regulator on the gas valve. They had, they had gas coming in, but not enough to kick the furnaces on. They had just a few.
So it's split a line this far?
Yeah, I seen the, I seen the picture of the line.
But the regulator, I guess, is owned by the gas company?
That's gas, that's where, that's to their responsibility.
And they're the one, and it malfunctioned, so.
What happened to, I'd asked, our charts and maps and our...
I think we only lost a couple of days worth of information. I believe Kent provides a day and a half, two days of data that we might have lost.
Okay, well, I'd asked, I'd come and talked to you at least a month or so ago, and asked you about backups on the computers, and you said everything in here is backed up to the cloud. Well, I'd asked Kent if his stuff was backed up, and he said, yeah, it was on a disk, but the disk was on the desk, and it may be ruined, too.
On the hard drive, yeah.
So, I mean, shouldn't we have a place that is out of those offices for exactly this kind of thing, to not lose information? I mean, if he's not going to back it to the cloud, if that's not possible from the water department, shouldn't it go at least here in the vault? I mean, he had a backup, but it was on the desk that the water spilled on.
We'll talk about, we'll discuss tomorrow's data and see what...
That's a valid point.
Yeah, I say Kent got that much more, I mean, this building's already on the cloud, I mean, they're just upstairs buildings, still on by the city, I wouldn't think it would run that much more, but on the cloud.
It's not a lot of information for us to have lost.
It is.
I agree.
Well, it's only like a day and a half, two days, it's not the total loss.
But the information should be, have a secondary state offside story, I agree.
Oh, did we lose the desk computers too, the laptop? There was at least one laptop in there, we lose it too?
We lost all of it, I hope. Yeah, and he was trying to, he went locally here today, but we weren't able to provide him quotes, so I think he was going online with Dale to order a computer.
Okay, moving along, Parks and Rec, Cemetery and Airport. I noticed that you said an employee gave notice at cemetery.
Yes.
And I don't know how you guys feel about it, I gave two weeks' notice, but I think before we hire more people, we need to kind of do an evaluation of how many people we need. I'm kind of thinking maybe, it's winter months, Cemetery and Parks can probably wait, and just kind of reevaluate all our employees and all our staffing, maybe when the new city administrator comes on. So at this point, I would like to not proceed with firing, hiring another person right now for Parks and Cemetery, how do you guys feel?
I don't think that's a good idea.
Why?
I think they can barely keep up in the summertime with the few he has. And then what happens if you cut one, if you, if you don't fill that position, you cut it, and then somebody else is sick or off a several weeks with medical, and it's in the middle of mowing season, then what are you going to do?
Wilbers out right now, six weeks.
Wilbers off, Dale's scheduled for one, next few weeks, we'll have, probably for three, four weeks, we'll only have two guys.
I don't know, just because we have a position, doesn't mean that position's needed. I think we need to evaluate our staffing a little bit overall, and I hate to just, you know, this is what happens, we have an open position, we fill it, and there's no overall evaluation of whether we need that many people. I went down to Wamigo, and there was a guy working in the streets, and their street department consists of three people. Their street department, Wamigo, the city of Wamigo, which is spread out to big city. So, you know, I think, I don't think we automatically have to fill the position right away.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
Are we allowed to say in open session who it was?
Who what was?
Who the person was that we lost?
That's Diana.
Somebody resigned?
That's Diana.
Yeah, she was the most recent new hire.
Most recent, right. She found another job.
So are you guys okay, consensus okay to wait?
Because I'd like to understand from the manager of that department what's not going to get done, because we just talked about the signage and not having, being able to do the, we wanted to do all the signs, well, no, but every department has responsibilities, and I guess I would just want to know, that may be a valid point not to, but I kind of want to hear what's not going to get done then, this winter.
It is the winter months, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, we assume that they still have things to do, maintenance and all those things, so.
Which is what they're, you know, for the winter months, you know, they're painting doors, they paint benches, a lot of those things are already going to spring, so the lightest time of the year is, are the winter months. That's why we don't have our summer help or seasonal help in the winter months, because we don't need them, we don't need them in the late fall after the mowing season, but once you get into the mowing season then...
I think we should just hire people when we need them, not wait. I think we should wait.
Well, why don't you take a motion, make a motion, and then we'll vote on this.
Take a motion, we wait two months or to hire somebody in the Parks Department.
All in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we had a discussion, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, so you want to revisit it in two months?
Yes.
Or do you want to, is that like the go-ahead in two months for them to do it, or do you want to talk about it again? See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
This is a little bit different.
Yeah, you ought to get to me and put the supervisor on.
Well, that's what I mean, we have two months for him to come and justify that position. So if he gives two months and then readdressed it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, are you okay with it?
Well, I guess, I mean, I'd be okay with just waiting for the supervisor to come and not have the two months on it, just because if he comes next meeting and explains it, then we've got it solved that way, too. I don't know that I'm in favor of necessarily waiting two months, but, I guess, this is a slow time, then it might be okay.
You're into the end of March.
Well, two months from today would be the second meeting in March, right? Yeah.
Twenty eighth of March.
But we can always, you know, find out we can't wait that long, we can always...
We address it.
Address it and go to hire next meeting or whatever, so.
If Dale comes in and jumps up and down, we can listen to him, right?
Well, then, let me just continue this discussion, because I think we have, I think we may have lost our newest employee in the water department, is that, you going to hold that same philosophy then for the water department?
Yeah, I think we're, we need to evaluate our position in every department, so, but we're not there yet.
Nowhere yet.
They haven't resigned yet, have they?
I believe that our newest position, newest Tyree in the water department. Not sure.
Okay, well, let's just address the Cemetery and Parks card right now. So we have a motion to readdress it in two months with a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Please with the house.
Okay, we'll do roll call?
No, for me.
Yes?
I'm sorry, you go ahead, do it.
I'll back off. Bike man?
No.
Bee singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
E kiss?
No.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Throw on?
No.
Five three?
Yes, five three.
Five three, okay, we will wait. Okay. Okay. Now we move along to police and fire. Todd?
I'd like to address a couple of things you guys have talked about, the backups of the information, that's something we're also looking at, we have external backups right now on all of our stuff. Scott's been working with us, and he is all, he's looking at options for us right now, like for carbonite and stuff like that. Our problem is, we back a lot of videos up, so we don't want to throw those to the cloud, way too expensive, so we do that, but our documents, we're looking at carbonite or something like the cloud for them, like the city hall does, and I think Scott is looking into where we buy a big enough package a month, we can take care of the entire city at one time. I know Scott's been helping, we've been working on it for three months now, it's just, obviously something like this, we should have probably had it done before that, but who knew? But it'll come down to money, Scott's trying to find the best for us, so.
Good, good.
Second thing is, we did just lose Hallstead, and we are actively looking for a new officer right now for his replacement. My problem is, if I find an officer replacement, if they're not certified, then I have to send them away for 14-week academy. That's why we fill them as we need them. If I can find somebody already certified, hey, that's gravy train, that's awesome, that saved us about $20,000. You know, we've bought contracts before to save us money, but right now, we haven't found any of them either, on either side. We're looking, but we have not advertised. I spoke to one person, but you can't afford him, so we found that out today, so we're still looking, so it's going to be time. And evaluation of department size, you know, we're four miles long now, I got the same department size when I was one square mile, we're covering four times the area with the same department, and yeah, I want to put him back, I want to fill that position back.
Chief Ackerman?
Chief Ackerman? I know you're covering more mileage, but land does not commit crime. I understand...
We have people out there, we are responsible for somebody breaking in, clearing out on 12th Road to somebody clearing out the 8th Road, I don't care if it's just land or if it's a building, they want to know, why weren't you patrolling here?
Well, yeah, but you also back up the sheriff's department, and your officer could be an axle, you know, so.
Rarely do they go that far, and they're not allowed to leave town unless somebody's here. Marysville's no, we're unprotected.
Okay, but I'm sure you do like every other department does, and you decide where you're going to patrol by the number of crimes in this, in certain areas, so I don't think that like, the new land that we've got, the new housing areas, I don't think there's much crime out there.
Oh, don't say that publicly, but yeah, we still patrol every area.
And I believe in that.
If there is a house on it, we're going to put people by it.
I believe in that, but if you're patrolling down in here because there's, there's crime out here every week, and out here they may have a bicycle stolen, and once a year, you're not going to make as much...
But I can tell you, if one thing would happen out there, everybody's property is worth 10 times more than they think it is, but I guarantee you, that we were the reason that thing was stolen, because we weren't there. I don't care if it's in the new subdivision, if it's on the west end of town, or clear out on the west edge of town, it's, we get bit, no matter if there's one little thing or a bunch of things. So we, our patrol area is still four square miles.
That's just because you're never going to be there when somebody's in the middle of a theft, that's highly unlikely.
Pretty much guaranteed with all the staff we have, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I mean, I understand our city's larger, but I just, I just don't think that's a reason to keep adding people to the police department.
No, 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 we're not adding anybody, we're just filling the position back, we're just keeping the same staff we have, that's all we're doing. I'm not asking to add any at all, I'd love to, but there's just no physical way, financially to do it. Well, I'd gladly take two or three more people, but no, right now, we just want to fill back what we've always had.
Okay.
So, but anyway.
Chief Ackerman? You patrol too, right?
Yes, but I'm only allowed 20% patrol time.
Okay, but you do fill in, and you are one of the officers on the street, right?
Only if it's under my 20% time, I can go out and actively patrol as an officer.
Okay, so for some reason you've done your 20% patrol by the time June rolls around, and you can't, you can't go out and patrol anymore the rest of the year?
It's, it's by the 80-hour week, year every two weeks. That's by FLSA, unless you guys want to pay me by the hour, then they can patrol. See, I've covered shifts already, and I've been over the hours and I shouldn't be, because we can be violated and fined for it.
Okay, well, the reason I'm bringing this up, and you know I love you like a toothache, but you're gone a lot, I mean, you're in a lot of training, you go, you're out of town a lot, you are, I mean, I think you are.
Certain times of the year, it would be not, it's not like that year, in the fact right now, you have the start of your legislative session, I have a meeting and speak at tomorrow, we're meeting with legislators tomorrow, it's about laws that certainly affect the state of Kansas and the city of Marysville. I actually, since I've been chief almost 17 years, I'm a very active chief in the state of Kansas, and I'm talking about with the legislature and everybody.
I'm sure you are.
And to be honest, I think it's a, it's a great thing for the city of Marysville, too.
How are we benefiting?
When we're talking about laws that affect not only just the city of Marysville, but the whole state of Kansas, it can be anything from our training that we have to have, hour-wise, certain crimes, marijuana's a big one, coming up again this year, since everybody else around is making millions, the state of Kansas is going to start moving toward it, there's a medical bill up on the hill right now for that. Oh, I could print out pages of it, you know, we, I'm trying to think of them, there's different abuse programs that they're wanting money for to create new laws for, all kinds of things, you know, like, we got asked yesterday, or last Friday, if we had time tomorrow, I wish I did, to talk, they wanted a chief, a rural chief to come and speak to the House Committee about broadband. What do we benefit from broadband? Because if you know broadband, they love to not have to fund it from rural areas. We're talking about broadband supplies us a lot of information.
Isn't that an issue before the legislature now?
It is, that's why I'm saying, they come to a lot of rural chiefs, because think about, most of your legislative votes, the powerhouses come from Johnson County area, but when they start asking for the input of rural chiefs in rural areas, we're going to give it to them, because rarely do we have a very good voice. You know, it pays out a lot to us, you know, we, with broadband especially, you know, with the internet, TV cable, everything, you know, with broadband information, there's a lot of things like that when you're involved, you know, I sit on a lot of committees, we're talking about committees maybe meet once a year for a day or half a day, it's not like I'm gone for weeks at a time at these committees, because I've just been observed, it's, we have to turn down offers to sit on committees, so Kansas municipalities have tried for four years, I get a thing that they want me to sit on one of their committees, what do you have to start saying no? And we do.
Weren't you gone three times, though, three times in December?
I'd have to look back on that, which, well, I was gone for the INT in Denver, that's the state response team I'm on.
Well, I knew that there, I mean, I looked at the hours and stuff, and I thought you were gone three times.
Oh, yeah, I put on there if I'm going to be gone.
Three hours to five days at a time. Doesn't that put a strain on your department?
Was on, no, it's just like I say, oh, we have second commands for that reason, as, as Debbie, or I, or Rick, or whoever your new person's going to be, that is expected, that is actually what a lot of the chiefs, I mean, I'm not doing this by myself across the state, I can tell you that, there's one committee I own has over 30 chiefs around the state sit on that committee, you know, it's, it's very, very common, no matter if, not much from Class 3, because they're very, very small, you know, like Blue Wrap in the Waterville, but they themselves down there also sit on committees with me in the state. And, but see, that's, not all committees take that much time as you would think, there's a training committee, there's, well, probably five or six different committees, which is the Chiefs Association alone, I don't sit on every one of them, it's just not enough time in the day, but there's a lot of them, like tomorrow, when I have a meeting with the legislator, well, the first three meetings of the day are different committees, so it's all the same day, it's not, it's a couple hours here and here and here, it's not a whole day or a week event, but it keeps you informed of what's going around the state, and I think it's very important, I can't tell you what city clerks do, I know what Debbie does here, but I can't tell you what they do, but if they're, if they're like their legislative committees as busy as ours, we pay thousands of dollars for a lobbyist, but then we have to go meet with them legislators to say, okay, this is what the chiefs are going to support, these are what we don't support, because it's going to do nothing but cost us money. We work closely with the league municipalities, because usually most stuff goes hand in hand with us, the same thing with the Sheriff's Association. Problem is with the Sheriff's Association, sometimes we clash, because it has a lot to do with their jails, populations, you know, and stuff like that, it's just, we need our voices to be heard in the state, and, not every chief does, but I think as a chief or head clerk or whoever you see measure should be involved, and I think if you do look at other classes, they're going to tell you the same thing, yes, these are what, it's not only to run your departments, but you got to stay informed, you got to network with these people, and it's not always if you think it's a vacation, go in these trainings and conferences, it's not. We're up at 6 o'clock in the morning, we're going to meetings by 7:30, 8 o'clock, and they're all day. This isn't a retreat, like some would think, I was accused of that one time by the previous mayor, said, no, follow me, I guarantee you, it's not a retreat.
Well, still, you're, you're away from your post, and you're out of your city, and it's one less person.
But if you look at my job description, it's in that, for that. It's in the job description that I interact with state, local, and federal authorities.
And that working can be a great benefit.
It is a huge, I would think you guys found that out when you go into your league conference, and that's just one entity, the league. We interact with multiple entities around the state and the nation both, and we have around the state and the nation both. You know, we have federal people come in all the time. It's, it's not what we call fun day or something. It's a lot of work and stressful and you pull your hair out some of those meetings, just like we do sitting up here. You know, it's, today, I sit on a finance committee. We're talking about finance and we're looking at $60,000 deficit for, for something. Now you gotta figure out how to shape something to save $60,000 when your whole entire budget is, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Where was that?
It's our Chiefs Association. We, we've had to replace our executive director. They're going through a whole changeover right now because of some things that happened. Now we're picking the pieces up. We, we may not stay involved, we should have, and it's come back to bite us.
Okay.
But it's getting straightened out.
That meeting was where?
I just drove over to Amigo.
Amigo? And then tomorrow you'll be going to Topeka?
Yes.
And I appreciate.
Well, I can say, that's February, or January. January, February, it's a legislative season. This is pretty typical, this time of year. Tomorrow, there will probably be 60 or 70 chiefs with me from across the state. And today there was 12, cause that's just a small committee. But very, not uncommon. That's just the way it is. Now, March, April, there ain't nothing going on at all. You know, it's just that time of year. Yeah, another busy time of year is September, sometimes a little bit in October. That's just when they're closing up for the year. You know, it's just different spots of the year, different things. You know, we was asked to sit on the, right, well, it's on the new hiring committee for this, this new executive director and stuff. Turned him down. I didn't have the time to go sit there and go through all the resumes and interviews and stay two days in Wichita and all that. Turned him down. You know, things are, things are balanced.
If we don't ask you, we don't know. And I appreciate that you don't get defensive when I ask you questions.
I'm an open book.
I appreciate that.
You know, this is tax money, but I think over the years, you know, seeing, we don't, in our department, we don't abuse our budget. We stay as actively involved. Matter of fact, I encourage my officers to stay actively involved in local or other things. You know, they wanna, there's, like an association, like the Narcotics Association, if one of them want to run for the board, I got no problem with wanting to run for the board. You know, talking once or twice a year for a day's meeting or something. Cause those are the guys that are responding back to the state to help with the new drug laws. You know, there's, everything's got a purpose. Usually, if it's not a purpose, I'm not gonna send them.
Well, your department is the largest part of our budget.
It is.
And so if your guys, or you have any ideas how we can hold the reins on that, maybe keep it down somewhere, we push it in.
I can tell you, Dave and I, we weigh training and overtime with what the budget is. We weigh it all the time. That's one thing. Dave sets up a lot of the training, starting at 4:00. And if there's anything that, he'll bring it to me after he looks at it and will say yes or no. It depends on what we have left in our training budget. How bad is it really needed? You know, there's certain specific certifications we like our officers to have. And sometimes when classes, oh, by the way, there's a class they just opened up and it's next month. You don't even know it till a week or a month in advance. There's no way we can, and we talked about a year schedule. That's long for us to do your schedules. It's just, hey, by the way, I got some grant money, so in 30 days, we're gonna help host this school. You know, it happens all the time.
So were you sending one of the officers, I saw in our packet here, where you were sending one of the officers for training?
I'm not sure which one.
Seattle?
Oh, yes. That's two narcotic schools. And they, they change the narcotic laws a lot. And I tell you what, and they're getting ready to go down the old road Colorado did, I think. Cause they're starting with the medical here pretty quick.
Kansas?
Yes. Yeah, that's the bill we were just talking about today. And we're meeting with legislators tomorrow. I mean, it comes from the medical marijuana bill. And there's a lot of push for it. Because when you look out there at Denver, you know, there's millions to be made. The problem is, there's a lot of problems for us that come along with that. You know, you look in our evidence room, we have all kinds of downtown Denver dispensary marijuana in our own evidence room already. We catch coming through all the time. Some people don't know, even though you pop it, doesn't mean you can't transport. You know, it's, it's, I don't want to digress here, but, uh, no, anytime you guys will know, that's why we started putting it, I'll put on there if somebody's going to training , that's something to do. I mean, because there's all different kinds of training that they have to have.
Okay, back to the truck.
Back to the vehicles.
Back to the truck.
The 2010, this is the truck that we kept instead of giving it to Dave, cause we'd had issues. Dave got the better truck and I think it'll last him. So that's why we asked to, to trade this one in. Does, does everybody understand what we did with getting the bids? Ford has a half-ton truck, is usually what we have. And this little SUV they came out with a couple of years ago, and it's a police vehicle. And then Chevrolet, since they don't have any small SUVs, we went ahead and built a three-quarter ton. Cause some of the department heads were like, why don't you guys do some three-quarters tons? And they would gladly use them. Doesn't matter to us, to be honest with you on those. But Ford's three-quarter ton is a Super Duty. It's like I personally own. That's too big for a patrol vehicle. You can't turn them around, they're just too massive. So that's why this way, we gave them both, two vehicles to bid. That's why it is what it is and what's presented to you. Believe it or not, the Chevy three-quarter was the cheapest truck, but it comes with a 6.0 engine. Anybody knows a six-engine? That's a lot of fuel.
Yep.
So, just going with the half-tons, Chevy came in under on the half-ton. But overall, the new, the SUV, little one, their Explorers, actually is the cheapest at only $18,000 trade, which is $5,000, $100 cheaper than the Ford truck and $3,300 cheaper than the Chevy truck. You know, if we can get it for $18,000, we bid, or we budgeted $34,000. So that's quite a savings to us, you know, this year, since we're trading a vehicle in.
But, but on the flip side of that, after the four years or 100,000 miles?
You're gonna have to probably trade it unless you know anybody that'd want it. And that small SUV, the only people that ever use it would be your city administrator, unless you found somebody else that needed a vehicle. But you'd probably trade it back. To be honest, I don't mind trading it, cause it definitely keeps our budget down, you know, for what we're having to trade for.
But do you would have more use for SUV, more usage for SUV?
We can use them both. We can, the truck or the SUV, the one would find. Matter of fact, this little SUV has the same engine that my Expedition does and the other Ford trucks. It's, it's the new EcoBoost they call it. So it's the same engine, so probably around the same gas mileage. The only difference is, is I won't, I don't allow them to carry animals in a closed vehicle, like our Crown books we used to have. They'd have to go pick up a truck to go pick up an animal. You know, cause it just keeps them nicer, it keeps them clean. We are the biggest ruling billboard of your city. We want to make sure our vehicles always stay nice.
So you'd rather have equipment in than the SUV, so it doesn't get weatherized and stuff like that?
Oh, definitely. You know, if we never get enough funds, I'd like to get those ruler boxes that go in the back of the trucks. And what the SUV like we put in the Expedition, cause all the equipment's in there, it's bolted down, it ain't going anywhere. But you know, you're talking about an extra 1,500, 1,600 bucks at least for those. But depending upon which vehicle we get, then we'd actually look and see what it costs to put them in. You know, the SUV does keep things cleaner, I'll tell you that, just from, from the ones I drive.
You had a note in there about the Chevy, about the, it's minus the extra wiring?
Yeah, see, last year our truck got delayed, well, almost five months. Because it got shipped to Texas to have, you can pre-wire for lights. And then come to find out, KCOM makes their own wiring harnesses, so we didn't even need to order it anyway. And it got stuck in Texas for five months. That's why when we told them, we ordered these trucks, we bid them, don't add that extra wire package, cause they're gonna build them in Manhattan anyway. So that way it didn't get stalled.
So once on this cost, what additional cost do we have to the?
It's usually about, I wanna say 1,800 to 2,000 to set a vehicle up. Now, that's, if we have to order it now, this, we'll probably have, have a new console, cause big vehicle stuff doesn't always transfer to small vehicle stuff. So the console, there's not a console in 10, so we would have to get a console. There's a few hundred bucks. So probably, it depends on the lighting system. See, like, when we got the Expedition, the lighting system I had in the corners, so you can see when you're coming to an intersection, was nine years old. They didn't even make those anymore. So we had to put the new LED style in there. It'll depend on what will transfer more. But if you, if you had an extra 1,500 or so, $3,000.
$3,000 on top of it? Okay.
Around that. Like I say, I hate to give you a total, cause if something, he calls and says, hey, it's broken, we can't replace it, they no longer make it, then we have to get it. But now the radios, the light bar, all that should transfer. It's just your smaller items.
Okay. Well, you guys want SUV rather than a truck that we pass on to the other department?
Is any of the other departments needing a truck?
They're always needing replacement trucks.
Not necessarily.
Well, the thing is, this vehicle won't be ready for four years.
Yeah.
Right.
Four years.
Right.
They'll just be one year, four years down the road. Wouldn't be one roll over.
Well, we're not rolling this one then.
No, this, I really do believe if you keep this one, it's gonna cost you some money more than it is now.
The 2,000, yeah?
Yes. It's got 123,000 on it now. And the warranty ran out of 100,000.
Cemetery and parks, like their parks are really old. Is this 565? What year is that truck? The Chevy crew cab? Is that relatively new?
565?
Yeah.
565, that was one of our patrol trucks.
So, that's probably like a '08, do you think? Or?
I gotta be honest, I can't even tell you what it is.
The Street 7, '09.
All of our trucks except for two. This one, and then one other time, we had a rural issue with the wiring inside of one. And we, we didn't roll, we traded it as well. But I think out of all the years, we've been doing it since, two years since I've been chief, so about for 15 years, there's only two of them, I think, that we haven't rolled.
We traded your Expedition in.
Yes, I, yeah. B3 though.
Okay, so that '09 was number 569. So the 565 was probably like the '08?
It was probably an '08, I bet, or somewhere in there.
'08. So their newest truck is an '08. But they have like a '94, a '97, and a '96 in parks. So if we don't roll a truck, we'll probably end up buying a truck.
I can tell you, if Dale gets a truck, I know him and I have talked, he would really like a three-quarter ton.
Yeah, but the three-quarter ton doesn't make sense for you from a patrol standpoint.
To be, to be honest, they're probably not a lot different between a half and three-quarter. They both have the same body size and everything. They're gonna ride a little rougher.
If you went to a Chevy.
If you went to a Chevy now Ford Super Duty, that's a massive vehicle. The only, the only emergency vehicle you really see with an F250, 350, 450 is either like a SWAT or a fire response vehicle.
I thought you said the three-quarter ton would use a lot more fuel.
Yeah, because it comes with a six-o engine. It doesn't come with a smaller engine like we have in the other.
So if you were gonna go to a truck, you would go to which way? If you didn't buy the SUV, you went to a truck, which one would you go with then?
If you don't, if the six-o gas fuel bothers you, then one of the half-ton trucks.
One of the half-ton, which is not as resolved then?
Yeah, but Chevy is under what Ford is for bid. If I was looking at them, I wouldn't mind trying the little SUV. I mean, it saves you several thousand dollars.
That's what Raleigh County's running.
Oh, they got a fleet of them.
Yeah.
That's, that's where, actually where I sat going, was in Raleigh County, cause I wanted to see what it felt like. Cause we run those half ca, or call them three-quarter or quarter cages, you know, we put in those. I wanted to see how those fit in there and stuff. And I wasn't surprised more than not, when I, when I got inside of one, how much room's in.
And plus, you can keep the equipment in there.
And clean.
You can.
How many trucks do you have in your fleet right now?
We have three trucks and the Expedition. We have four total. Not a lot of people think we have more. We really don't. We only have three trucks and one SUV.
So if you trade one of those trucks, then you have two trucks. And then the next one would roll out in, next year then? And one of the trucks would roll out next?
Two years, I think. I don't think we have one budget for next year, do we?
Well, we haven't done 2017 budget yet.
No, 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 I mean, though, but 16, we have one, but they're new enough. I don't think we need one in 17.
You got two of them, and what, what are you supposed to get to?
The one got crashed.
Yeah.
And replaced it, so pushed two into the same year.
Right.
So I think, I'd have to have a look at the years to be sure, but I think we're good for 17, so we won't have to have a 2017.
Okay.
Just, is the, for those, is the thing, before going like to EcoBoost and the things like that, or those are great for what you need, but if thinking about the trade-in, is that something that's really not gonna work for?
I can say EcoBoost engine, I know that like Blue Valley actually uses them in their trucks to pull equipment off.
Okay, that's what, okay.
EcoBoost V6 has more horsepower than V8.
You just answered right, yeah. Okay. So it's still good for other purposes?
They, I'm amazed, they're at least, they're down to the top.
So we're gonna have whatever we get for years?
Yeah. When Rick and I, we did a thing here, it was the last year, about rolling vehicles. And we do four years on the patrol vehicles. Mine, the one I drive does not get as many, mine's would use six years on it. We add a couple extra years, just cause it doesn't get the mileage in an actual, mine gets used on patrol by the guys when we have them in the shop, people are trading with. Other than that, it don't get much for mileage.
Well, maybe we purchased a Ford Explorer for $18,500 and traded in 2010 Ford 150.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion?
Oh, they all did come 100,000 mile warning. Everything we did was 100,000 mile warnings.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain because of my interest in Bud's motive.
Okay. Seven, oh. All right. Thank you, Chief.
I have to leave to do something. Did anybody need anything else for our lease department?
I think we're done.
I can relate, well, I'm gonna pace on this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief Ackerman.
Thanks, John.
Finance and admin, I just had, I had a couple things. Did we want to, you're, you're, going back to the ordinance on the vehicles, you're saying we can't write an ordinance to have people not put vehicles on right-ofways. That's what you're saying?
Yeah, we did search there and Todd had advised that based on our city codes, those people that are parked basically on the grass between the sidewalk curb, we don't have anything back up.
We have, we, we can't do anything about that.
Right.
Unless it's a, unless it's a vehicle that's not tagged or in offer, and then we can.
You, you don't have a code for it, you have to ask your city attorney if there's a legal way to do it, but you don't have a code for it.
Oh, so we could write an ordinance for it?
It does, by order. Well, I mean, like I said, we don't own that property. You only have a right-ofway use. So that's something I'd definitely have to get your attorney to look at.
Do you wanna ask Craig if we can do that?
Yeah, welcome.
Okay. And I know you said something in the highlights about KDOT and the fire agreement, you haven't got anything yet?
The other, I've been advised that they were trying to initiate it.
Okay.
It's somewhere in there.
And you haven't heard anything from Schwab Eaton on the appeal yet? Okay. And the only other thing is, in the packet I'd like to see, you know, we always bring up all these different things and about addressing different yards. And I would like to see a roll forward in, in the agenda packet, the status of all the different things that we bring up, meeting to meeting. Kind of like the roll forward you do on the projects, just so that we know where the status is on things that we've brought up. Are you guys in agreement that that would be helpful? Okay. So Dave can work on some type of roll forward schedule for us? Anybody else have anything?
With that in mind, where are we on the money owed for the damage to the airport runway?
Well, I was gonna visit with the city attorney tonight, but didn't know he wouldn't want to be here, so I've got, I need, I have something that I want him to look at. I have, I have a petition.
That would be my fault. He asked, he called and asked me if I expected him this week. And since he was here last week, I said no. He wanted to know if he, we, he wanted him to come on the first meeting or the second meeting of the month. Does he want him next year on the 8th or the 22nd? That's why he's not here today. So it's my fault. Because he was here last week, I just, last meeting, I'm sorry. I said, you don't need to come. But do you prefer, you guys have a preference on first meeting or second meeting of the month?
Second meeting of the month, isn't that where everything has to be signed, that you have to sign for business of months?
Well, we have things to be signed every meeting, really. So, it's, it's just.
Second to five.
Second preference. So you're okay if he doesn't come till February 22nd?
Yep.
All right. I will communicate that to him.
Okay. What, you have to talk to him about this? About a, he wants to discuss that with the lawyer?
Yeah, I need to discuss it with the attorney, which I was gonna do tonight, but before he can't. I didn't know he wouldn't come, so. But I'll, so I'll have to take it up on an email this week.
Well.
Same time.
Municipal court, we're taking.
This isn't about municipal court. This is district court.
Okay. District court for the damage that's at the runway?
Yeah, we're not talking about municipal court. Talking about district court.
Why is it going to district court?
You guys wanted to go to small claims court. That's where it is. It's at the courthouse.
District court is municipal court. I mean.
No, 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 no. Small claims are filed in district court. You don't do small claims here at City Hall.
You go to the county.
You have to go up there. Magistrate.
Yeah.
Not district.
Well, I don't know who the judge, I don't know if magistrate judge or district judge.
That's the Angie Hecky. District would be Wyngarden or Patton.
It's filed with district court. Who they, what judge they sign is up to them. Whether it's magistrate judge or district judge.
So you'll talk to the city attorney and then you'll put something in the highlights?
Yeah, he, cause he can't go. No, I'm not, no, I'm not gonna put things in the highlights.
That's true.
No legal matter, I mean. No legal matter, I mean.
Okay, okay.
Why do we want to play our cards for you?
All right. I guess we'll discuss it next meeting, in executive session if we need to.
Yeah.
The next item is appointments and wage terminations. We have one for Gary Gundelfinger, who was on six months. I guess you'd call it probationary period as street supervisor. And it's proposed for the 1923 per hour.
Move to remove Gary Gundelfinger from probationary status to regular status at the rate of $19.23 an hour.
Okay.
Any discussion? My only comment is, I think he's doing a great job. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? City attorney, he emailed us a contract here. Did you guys have a chance to read it? You did?
It's a meeting.
You did read it before the meeting? Did you guys have any problems with the contract?
Skinned it.
Yeah. Do you guys want to go ahead and approve this contract now?
Move to program it for professional services for Craig Olson of Morrison, Frost, Olson and Irvine and Shartz. Is there a second?
One second. Any discussion?
I think 155 is outrageous. And there's not even a dollar amount on mileage yet on this contract.
I think that.
We're going to have to pay the IRS rate.
IRS is .575?
Something like that.
I think that ought to be included in this.
Okay, well.
I think he would probably be agreeable with us to state it's the IRS rate.
I think the 155 rate, I have, I've come to understand this and go back and look at everything, the expertise that he brings to bear and the backing of his law firm, he gets things done in less time, as, as did Norbert, than what we paid for a full-time attorney.
Well, I think it wasn't too long ago that we were complaining about $110 being too much.
That's right. But $110 this hour, this hour, this hour, as opposed to $155 for this one hour, the guy's getting the same, more work done in less time.
I'm just saying. I hope you're right. But the proof's in the pudding, and I haven't seen the pudding.
Well, the pudding was, go look, look and see what Norbert did for us.
But this isn't Norbert.
Yeah. But this is who Norbert recommended.
Okay.
Placed himself.
I think we ought to see how it goes, I mean, how he is in six months, then maybe raise it to that. I think we, I think we could.
We've already approved the rate at the last meeting.
I'm just expressing my deepest inner thoughts.
Well, there's a 30-day out, too. I mean, any contract, it has a, it's not, it's not binding in the sense that we can't.
We can't terminate the contract.
We can't terminate.
We decided.
Exactly. Yeah. So it's not, we're not, we're not agreeing to a, we're not, the contract may be for a period, but it is not, you're not.
I'm just not ready to sign off on this.
Okay, well, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Seven, one. Okay. And no executive session that I'm aware of, does it have a second? Okay, so we will start roundtable. I'm just going to start because we have that new service to our community, I hope you guys are all aware of, that KNY Radio is having the mayor and/or the city council on after every meeting. So tomorrow morning, I'll be on, and whoever else would like to be on with me at 9:35. We just discussed what we talked about tonight, and like tomorrow, you've already told me to address the snow issue, the sidewalk issue. So first, I think it's a wonderful service that they're bringing for us to expose you to our community. But number two, does anyone want to go on with me tomorrow morning at 9:35?
Tomorrow, but I would be willing to do it.
Not, but not tomorrow.
I can't do it tomorrow.
Can anybody do it tomorrow with me?
Not me.
I've forgotten.
We've done it. I'm just saying.
But it's going to be ongoing. Your thing is ongoing.
It's going to be after every meeting. So no one wants to come join me tomorrow?
I'd love to, but I got to work.
Okay, you're going to work?
It would be nice if we could maybe come.
I'll do it if Todd.
Excuse me? It's always going to be, it's always going to be.
But have us almost plan out these, these weeks.
And yeah, and why don't you email me when you think you can work, work, come that meeting, and I'll make sure it's scheduled.
It's on Tuesdays.
Okay? So I will go tomorrow morning. Okay, and that's all I have. Keith?
Nothing.
Mel?
Yeah, I got something. The lights on the water tower, if, start with, I think the horse, the rider's too big. And, because if you put the lights on the rail out here, and they shine up, they hit right here. Those lights are not going to go around the curve of that water tower and light that head up unless you put a bracket way out there that go up there.
I think they were going to put it off the top ring, weren't they?
Or from above. Or it's where they would have to put it.
Yeah, they were going to put it from the top.
$4,000 extra we were talking about, isn't it?
Yeah. That was their design.
But it is.
I think it's a design flaw. I maintain it's a design flaw.
It is. It is a design flaw, but the horse, the rider.
We didn't design it. We paid somebody a lot of money to do that.
Did we ever talk to, did you ever talk to Olson about that?
It's not a lighting flaw.
Yeah, I did. I haven't got the information now, so I think he's been busy, forgot all that.
Remind him what good customers we are.
But it still looks, it still looks nice. It does. I've looked at it coming in, and it still looks nice.
But it is.
Do they come on a certain timer by sensor? I was trying to figure that out the other day.